Iminah Tren Taidos. Iminah Tren Taidos, Nalehas La Tren Guam is called to order. If I may ask Senator San Nicholas if he can please lead us in prayer. Thank you very much. Senator Uggan, can you lead us in the recitation of the Ina Fresi? And for the singing of the Guam hymn in Chumor, Senator Morrison, and the singing of the National Anthem by Senator Duñez. Thank you very much. Would the clerk please take roll call? Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Uggan. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Lim Tiaco. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Resfischo. Senator Rodriguez. Senator San Nicholas. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum. Thank you very much. Senator Resfischo, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning. Madam Speaker, I move that those senators not present for this special session be excused.
On that motion without any objections, ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the Let's Save Journal dated June 3rd through June 4th of this year. The first special session, I move that that be approved subject to the subject correction.
Hearing objections, ordered.
Madam Speaker, there is a communication from Imagallai in Guam, and I request that the clerk or her assistant read the governor's message.
Would the clerk please read their governor's message?
From the office of the Governor of Guam dated July 30th, 2013, to the Honorable Speaker Judith T. Wampat EDD, Speaker Iminah Tren Taidos, Nalehas La Tren Guam, 155 Hessler Street, Hagat near Guam, 96910. Dear Madam Speaker, pursuant to my authority under Section 1423H of the Organic Act of Guam, I am calling Ileos La Tren Guam into special session on Wednesday, July 31st, 2013 at 10:00 a.m. to consider the enclosed bill entitled, "An Act to Authorize the AB Wampat International Airport Authority (Guam) to Issue Revenue Bonds for the Purpose of Refunding the General Revenue Loan on a Subordinate Basis" to add a new Section 1115 and amend Sections 1203.1 and 1224 of Title 12, Chapter 1 of the Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Section 5351 of Title 5, Chapter 5 of the Guam Code Annotated. This bill is substantially similar to Bill Number 129-32, which was previously introduced by Senator Tina Munia Barnes and Senator Chris Duñez. As with Bill 129-32, the enclosed bill authorizes GIAA to refund its 2003 revenue bonds at the same maturity date, thus realizing substantial debt savings services. The bill also adds up to $110 million in capital improvement projects. These capital improvement projects will have no adverse impact on the general fund, and at the same time, they will generate much-needed employment and construction activity. GIAA reports that its signatory airlines are in support of the bill and of GIA's overall financing program with the inclusion of the bond refund elements into GIA's FY 2014 budget. GIAA presently pays an annual bond insurance premium of $820,000. An urgent situation has arisen in that if GIA does not refund its 2003 bonds and does not issue a call notice to current bondholders by August 30th, 2013, GIA will not be able to avoid the bond insurance payment of $820,000. Refinancing the 2003 revenue bonds will allow GIA to not only save the $820 insurance payment, but every year going forward, beginning in 2014 until the bonds mature in 2023, an additional amount of approximately $800,000 will be saved annually. This $1.6 million in savings can only be realized, however, if the enclosed bill is considered and GIA is authorized to refund its 2003 revenue bonds. In addition to these savings, GIDA reports that the refunding of the 2003 revenue bonds under current market conditions will also allow GIA to realize $12.3 million in gross debt service savings, as well in net PV savings of $10.8 million, and present value savings of 7.45%, a 2% PV savings threshold in the legislative norm. For these reasons and because of the potentially great economic impact the refinancing the GIA 2003 revenue bonds have to our island, I am calling Ileos La Tren Guam into special session for consideration of the enclosed bill. I thank you for your consideration of this session call. I also thank Senator Munia Barnes and Senator Duñez for laying the foundation for the bill through their authorship and co-sponsoring of Bill Number 129-32. I hope that the rest of the members of Ileos La Tren will recognize the need to act quickly to meet the bond refund call notice deadline of August 30th, 2013. Doncolu nasijos mossis, sinceramente, Eddie Baza Calvo.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Majority Leader. Four messages from the Governor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Clerk's Office, for reading the Governor's message, and I move that that message be appended to today's session journal.
Hearing objections, ordered.
Madam Speaker, given that this is a special session and that we are only allowed through the Organic Act to entertain the item to which the Governor calls us into, I move that Items 10, 11, and 12, I guess, be waived.
On that motion without any objections, ordered.
And, Madam Speaker, I also have no motions, as well as Item 14. While we like to do confirmations today, we're prohibited to do so, so I also move that Item 14 and Items 15 be waived.
14 and 15, no objections, so ordered.
So, Madam Speaker, on the second reading file, we have Bill 12-S, and it's introduced by the Committee on Rules, Federal Forum, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform by the request of Imagallai in Guam in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. Before, Madam Speaker, before we resolve into the Committee of the Whole, my first motion is there seems to be consensus that if the Governor's calling us into this special session to address a substantially similar bill, which is Bill 129-32, there's consensus that we try to make his call to special session consistent with his statement and his message. And having said that, there is consensus that we delete Sections 5 and 6 before we resolve in the Committee of the Whole. So, the focus of this special session would be the same focus as Bill 129, to which he references, that's been introduced by Senator Barnes and Senator Duñez, and that bill deals strictly with refinancing of these Airport Authority bonds.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, at this time, I move that we resolve into the Committee of the Whole for purposes of hearing Bill 12-S. And also, there's been consensus by the Vice Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, as well as the Chairman to which has oversight authority over the Guam Airport Authority, that the Chairman of the Oversight Authority over the Airport Authority, as well as the Vice Chairman now of the Committee on Appropriations, which is responsible for these bond issues, have agreed that Senator Tom Ada, Chair of the Committee of the Whole, and I put that before the body at this time. So, on my motion to resolve in the Committee of the Whole and to have Senator Tom Ada as the Vice Chair of the Committee on Airport Matters, Chair of the Committee of the Whole, and that we recess, Madam Speaker, to allow you to invite any individual, namely, the Airport Authority Executive Manager and the Guam Economic Development Authority Administrator, and any other individuals that are standing by, that are prepared and willing to assist the legislature deliberate on Bill 12-S now as amended.
On that motion, which is to resolve and append it to the whole, allow us some time to be able to call in the representatives of GIDA and the airport and any others that the Committee deems appropriate, and that Senator Tom Ada will preside as the Chair for the Committee of the Whole, without any objections, so ordered.
And that is, to make sure that everybody will have an opportunity to ask their questions and get them answered, I'm going to go ahead and ensure that everybody gets at least five minutes. But then after that, if it seems like it's just kind of dragging on, I'm going to go ahead and exercise a prerogative to halt you there so that we can go to the next individual, and then we'll start the cycle all over again. So, at this time, please call them in. Yes, yes, Speaker. Okay, before we start, I'm going to ask the officials from the Airport Authority and from GIDA to be sworn in, so, Sargen and Arm. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to ask Mr. Henry Titon to introduce who's here representing GIDA. Yes. Standing the airport.
Good morning. My name is Charles Ada, the Executive Manager for the Guam National Airport Authority, and with me today is Mr. Frank Santos and Mr. Carlos Bedalio.
And in what capacity is Mr. Santos and Bedalio here?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Santos is our airport consultant, and Mr. Carlos Bedalio is our comptroller.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and first open up, maybe I should ask GIDA to go ahead and just give a brief overview of what the bill does with respect to Sections 2, 3, and 4, briefly. Yes?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just, I don't know if this is where this would be presented, but just so that we don't completely bypass a letter of communication that was forwarded to us by the Chair of Appropriations that has oversight of this legislation, I just want to bring this to the attention of our colleagues, highlighting that, in fact, he mentions here that he recognizes the importance of this measure and that the timeframe between now and the time he has scheduled the public hearing for the proposed legislation that is in the hopper right now, that apparently it would still be able to meet that timeframe. I just wanted to make sure that it's publicly stated and recognized that this body has received this communication. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Titon, go ahead and give a brief overview of the bill.
If it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be able to do that.
Proceed.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The Section 2, Approval of the Terms and Conditions of the Antonio B. Wampat International Airport Authority Refunding Bonds, is the opportunity which actually opened the door for us to be here today because we understand that we have during the current interest rate environment the ability to be able to provide interest rate savings on the bonds that are currently outstanding. And if I could get somebody from the Clerk's Office to provide copies, which we'll distribute, you know, kind of get a visual of what that is. I can continue while the copies are being made, but in essence, when you receive the copy, you will find that in Section A of Section 2...
I think I want to wait until the copies come so that the members will have something to go by. We just call a brief recess. Sure. All right, we're going to go ahead then, and while we're waiting for the copies to be made, to allow the members to make opening statements. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. I want to follow up on what was just previously said by Senator Uggan. And as Vice Chair of the Committee on Appropriations and Bonds, I just want it clear on the record that I really do think that this is premature. And with the government going out for what looks like about $150, no, actually, over $200 million in bonds, we really should have a public hearing and get this consensus and the views of the entire community. The Committee on Appropriations yesterday announced that we were going to conduct a public hearing on the 6th of August, and we would have been able to receive public testimony on the 6th. Even if we left the record open for 10 days for people to send in their comments, we would have been done by the 16th. And I'm sure since we were going to be in session during that week anyway, we could address this bill and have it out by the 30th of August. And this is 100, I mean, I'm waiting for them to come up with the amount, but it's 125 plus the refinance of 135. It's over $200 million that we're going to be saddling the community with. And in spite of the statement that this is not going to affect the general fund, I beg to differ because the fact that they have this bond is what they're using as a reason for the airport saying it has to charge the customs and quarantine in $3 million in taxes, I mean, in rent. We've been picking up that tab for the last several years without an appropriation, much to my chagrin. So, to say that the fact that the airport is leveraged out to over $200 million in bonds is not affecting the general fund is not true. It's because of their bonds that they're using and saying that we can't, we have to charge everybody, we have to charge, you can't do this, you can't do that. So, the general fund is effective. The only ones that are getting rich are the airport and with their salaries. But Customs and Quarantine and the rest of the government of Guam doesn't have that ability to be able to do these kinds of things. And we have to have the public input on this because this is huge. And we would, the Committee would be able to do this in a timely fashion were we given the time to have it on the 6th, and we would still have this out before the 30th, long before the 30th. They could still get their notice out 30 days, as I understand from this morning's radio comments by Mr. Carlson, that by the 30th, we have to notify the people that we're going to be taking some action on their bonds. So, there is no need for this precipitous action today without receiving public comment. And I just want to object, and I really want to place it on the record, that it's imperative. I mean, I got probably one of the most scathing letters, emails, from a constituent last night on this bill. Not about the fact that there was no opportunity for public comment. And I really do think that the public should be heard on this bill, and we would have had that, the Committee would have had that, had we been given the opportunity to have our hearing on the 6th and still get this out in a timely fashion. So, I just want to place that on the record. I know we've started this proceeding, but I just want my colleagues to understand that the notice went out, the five-day notice went out yesterday, and we could have this addressed, and we could hear the community on this and get the public input. Right now, we're having Committee of the Whole, we're going to get to ask our questions, but how about the people out there? How about the concessionaires? How about everybody else? How about the airlines? How much is this going to cost them? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Duñez?
Morning, Mr. Chairman and panel. While I appreciate the comments of the retiring speaker, I wanted to make a couple of points. First of all, as a co-author of the original legislation that would have, or purports to do, what we're now discussing, I want to reiterate that it was introduced on May 31st. And there has been ample time, quite a bit of time, actually, between then and now, to have had a public hearing on this bill. Notwithstanding, here we are. Mr. Chairman, also in the panel, I personally would like to hear the panel's presentation in terms of the time-sensitive nature of acting on this measure after having gone months without a public hearing on this measure. And I'm sure they would have been equally, at that time, descriptive of the requirements and the need to move with some sort of quickness on this measure. Simply, well, we'll wait for their presentation. Mr. Chairman and panel, members of the body, I also received that email from a constituent who I have a great deal of respect for, and I'm going to send him an email momentarily on my registered concerns as well. Mr. Chairman, as we note, though, prior to going into the Committee of the Whole, we did delete Sections 4 and 5. Oh, 5 and 6, excuse me. I stand corrected, 5 and 6. And I know, having read the email and having gone through the bill and going through it now once again, that the majority of the representations were on the basis of those sections. And I have to say that at this point, I concur, and public input most certainly needs to come about with regard to that. In closing, Mr. Chairman, and members of the panel, and members of the public, I have a feeling that, we all know, in terms of advertisements on TV with regard to mortgage rates, with regard to a moderate recovery within the economy of the United States, that interest rates have changed by as much as a percent, which purports and will equate to, I believe, millions and millions of dollars with regard to the long-term implications and the uncertainty, as mentioned now, that the market continues to show some sort of strength. And I would sure hate for us to not be able to dispose and make the notification to the markets on this particular measure and end up with another point increase, or perhaps more, in the near future, missing possibly the opportunity to go to market within the timeline that's been extended and all notification to bondholders. So, I'll sit and listen, Mr. Speaker, or Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. However, I think that is an extreme valid concern. And while public input is definitely very important, and I value that, I think the public would understand if there was the potential, I put a big if on it, the potential that are not acting properly or maybe hastily would result in a number of capital improvement projects having to be deferred, delayed, or not done, or additional employment fees to be added in order to make up for the possible loss of revenue that could be realized on the refinancing of these bonds within the next 60 days, perhaps as purported. So, Mr. Chairman, I register that as my concern, and also just as my opening comment to at least want to dispose of the information from the panel before we make that decision to say, okay, we can go ahead and wait on the request of the Chairman and perhaps other members of the body. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Vice Speaker Cruz?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I just wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, that I do know that members of GIDA were in San Francisco in early May doing initial discussions about this bond. And GIDA and the airport have been talking about this bond since the beginning of the year, probably even before that. And to say that on May 29th, the bill was introduced... And to say that on May 29th, the bill was introduced, and now that 60 days later that it hasn't been heard, it's unfair. This is not the way to run government. If they've been planning on this bond, then they should have gotten the bill introduced earlier in the year, and we wouldn't be in this, where we're trying to fall over ourselves to try to get something done in a special session. And it's not as if the committee has been sitting and been on vacation for the last two months, Mr. Chairman. We've been almost daily in meetings with the administration on SES, trying to get what the revenue is. We by law have to, by the end of this month, also have to have, next month, have to have a budget pass. And so we've been having, the committee has been having all those hearings. So it's not as if we've been sitting on our thumbs and not doing anything. We have. But they also, the administration also has to take some of this blame because they were in San Francisco floating this idea in February, I mean, in early May. And they've been talking about this for some time. Why wasn't this before us earlier this year? We would have been then been able to get the public input as to whether or not a $250 million bond is something that we want to be able to be floating. So I take offense to the fact that they're claiming that the committee was sitting on its hands. They've known, and they cannot continue to do this, where they tell us on the 11th hour they want something, and by, and at the 11:30, it says it's impossible, we're going to turn into pumpkins at 12 o'clock. They've known it since this morning. This is no way to run government.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I would say that, and register for the record, I am equally dismayed that we say 60 days is not sitting on our hands. Granted, we have all known that there have been in the works discussions on this refinancing of this bond, but the fact of the matter is, is I continue and maintain that, and I know there's been plenty of work that's been going on, but I maintain that 60 days is a long time, particularly when in that same 60 days or within that same quarter or two, we've seen an entire point, I believe, change in market rates. And yes, it's $250 million. $250 million amortized for possibly the next 30 years, and a change of a point means millions of dollars. That has to be a reality here in front of us, and that has to be a reality when we're balancing the needs of this government and what we're going to do. So that 60 days, to me, is an important 60 days when you have that and you're up against a changing market. And I think that will be explained by the panel here, Mr. Chairman. So I once again say I'm equally appalled, and I think this legislature, you know, should act within 60 days on stuff like this, that is of this level of importance in terms of millions of dollars and compliance with federal regulations. We're currently not in compliance with regard to our separation of guests coming in and going. We have to do so many things just to comply with that, that's uncomfortable for our passengers. And I know the panel will make those points. So I'm equally appalled. Sometimes we need to move fast, and that is the way to run a government, when you've got millions of dollars on the line, and you've got an airport right now that is not state-of-the-art in terms of its operations at this point, but can be. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
It's just a couple of things. The Fed decided that it was not, the Federal Reserve decided it wasn't going to increase the rates early, just a couple of months ago. If we wanted to save the 1%, this should have been floated since last year. The airport has been in noncompliance for over 15 years. And now, in 60 days, and I know the airport's looking like, we have not, it's been a long It only came to a head in 2001 when we had to segregate, but it's been before that that we've been, that we should have had the segregation since the airport was designed. So it's been decades. But we're now doing this and saying 60 days in the committee is completely unheard of. This should have been done early in the year. We would have been able to maybe save two points if we had done this early, if we're going to get down to losing a point over the last 60 days.
All right, thank you very much. I just want to state for the record here that, in fact, a public hearing notice was sent out from the Chairman for the Committee on Appropriations stating that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, August 6th at 9:00 a.m. for the purpose of hearing, among others, Bill 129, which is basically what we are hearing today. I've heard, we've had opening remarks, individuals stating their positions. Other than that, I haven't heard any other motion to do otherwise. Senator Serniklas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm quite disappointed that we are at this point here. I'm disappointed with GIDEA. I'm also disappointed with the airport. I'm the chairman of aviation, and this bill was originally presented to me prior to me going off island, and I had asked that we meet to discuss it when I get back. And while I was away, the bill was provided to another senator to introduce without me being able to be a part of the discussion. That was very disappointing. Afterwards, I had a meeting with the airport, and we talked about the bill, and I said that there are certain things that I can find favorable to it, but there are other things that I would like to work on the airport with as well in order to be able to get some provisions in place that I think will be very good for our people. And I always have the understanding that that was what we were going to do. And now we're here in this special session called by the governor to move the bill forward without us being able to get those necessary provisions in place. Not only are we not including the public's input without having a public hearing, we're also maneuvering this bill through channels that are bypassing the committee that has oversight over aviation. And there are a lot of items within this bill that have collateral items as well relative to the airport that we can discuss and talk about in order to help improve the way that the money is flowing within the airport, and also, as Vice Speaker Cruz alluded to, how it's also impacting the general fund and agencies that do business with the airport. And I was hoping that we could come to terms and agree that as we move this very necessary piece of legislation forward, we can do it within that context. Instead, we're here now with this bill and with this special session under a sense of urgency illustrated by our governor regarding an annual bond insurance premium. Now, this annual bond insurance premium, Mr. Chairman, could very well be an issue of urgency. However, this bill is not only addressing the portion of the debt that is relative to the insurance.
Re-cess. This Committee of the Whole is called back to order. We left off with Senator Serniklas, you were finished with your opening remarks. No, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to our listening audience and to the members of the body for their patience in our brief interruption. I was talking about the governor's letter referencing the urgency as it concerns the insurance bond premium of $820,000. And while that could very well be considered an urgent question that we need to address, that annual insurance bond premium is only referencing the existing amounts to be refunded, which is about $135 million. And if we were being called into special session strictly to address the urgency of that insurance bond premium, we should have only been, we should only be entertaining the $135 million that's the amount that's part of that urgency. But in the bill, we've included an additional $125 million in new financing on top of that $135 million in refunding. So what essentially we're doing is we're taking an urgency in one hand, and we're trying to pair it up with more borrowing in the other hand. And there are cost advantages to doing that, Mr. Chairman, but we have to be very careful about pursuing cost advantages at the expense of public input, at the expense of committee input, at the expense of the participation of our community when it comes to borrowing a quarter of a billion dollars against our airport. And the new money, the new $125 million, also is authorized for a 32-year timeframe with all the same kind of covenant limitations attached. And there's a lot of things to talk about when it comes to putting us under the same conditions for another 32 years. It has implications not only on the general fund and what it's costing, but also the general fund and what it's not able to receive. It has implications on self-determination and how sticking the airport underneath the FAA for another 32 years could in fact have major implications on our self-determination because the airport will be bonded to the FAA for 32 years. And I don't want to get too much into that, Mr. Chairman, those are the discussions that we can have on the floor. But what I did want to make an opening statement about is that if we're going to be addressing an issue for urgency, for the purpose of urgency, we need to be clear about where the urgency lies and address strictly the urgency without bypassing the public hearing process and without bypassing the community input process on the other elements of the bill that are getting tagged to this urgency that aren't necessarily a part of it. And those are the kind of things that we need to be mindful of as we proceed here, and I am interested in listening to the presentations of both GIDEA and the airport and trying to navigate this whole bill. But again, there are, we are talking about two different subjects here. One does have a degree of urgency with regards to the insurance, but another does not. And so I would like for the members of the panel to please clarify that and be very succinct in why the lack of a public hearing on an additional $125 million of borrowing is worth bypassing the community's participation in order to pursue a degree of savings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think what we'll do is I'll, we'll take note of that question, the panel can respond to it after all the opening comments have been made. Thank you. Senator Uggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you know, I certainly have an appreciation for the presentation or the individuals who are representing the executive branch in the airport and GIDEA in terms of being able to respond to questions and inquiries, but I think that the underlying issue here, it goes back again to the idea of sharing, the chairman of the appropriations' message, is that there is a public hearing that's scheduled for the 6th. And during the course of the conversation, I'm sure we get clarity as to exactly what the compressed timeframe will be, and if in fact GIDEA and the airport will be able to go out and proceed and refinance the existing bond obligation and perhaps borrow additional funding so that they can address some of these concerns. Because as we look at the proposal itself, there are some infrastructure requirements that the airport does need. And if in fact the market conditions provide for it, then certainly looking at refinancing the existing bond should be seriously considered, and the airport should have that option in conjunction with borrowing additional resources. But then it really goes down, boils down to what, if any, additional resources the airport has that could justify going out to the bond market and borrowing an additional $120, $130 million to add up to $250 million in terms of the airport proceeds. But I was able to discuss just very briefly in terms of some of the listed items of priority that the airport would like to address, and I certainly recognize some of those requirements. But my concern, I just want to share concerns that have been expressed already, is that when in fact the public hearing for the proposed legislation is within five days, the reality is, it's going to boil down to some of the comments that are shared with us today. What is the time urgency, and is the airport and is GIDEA able to consolidate their presentation so that in fact by the August 30th timeline and by the timeline that they have established in terms of providing feedback to the market representatives, whether that would be able for them to be able to refinance and not have to pay that additional obligation that has been purported, that they're trying to refrain from paying by virtue of refinancing. So I just wanted to express that concern, and I'm looking forward to some of the responses that are provided because that's really going to justify, Mr. Chairman, whether in fact we proceed as planned in terms of discussing this particular proposal today, or do we give the people of Guam, give the public the opportunity on August 6th to be able to provide their comments and then get the assurance either from the leadership of this legislature or from the entire membership of this body that shortly after the public hearing, that this bill will be entertained so that in fact we meet the timelines that are necessary, and we give the airport that opportunity to refinance and to perhaps acquire additional proceeds because certainly some of the projects that are listed here are anticipated requirements of the agency. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. If there are no other members that want to make opening remarks, I'm going to go ahead and, we had started out with GIDEA basically giving an overview of the bill, but I think we're going to go ahead and go straight to the heart of the question that basically has been posed, and that is the question of why is this, hearing this bill today so urgent that it cannot wait for a regularly scheduled public hearing, which is currently scheduled for next week on August 6th? So with that, I'm going to go ahead and ask GIDEA to respond to that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank, first of all, all the members of the legislature who have been contacted months ago with advanced knowledge, as Senator Serniklas stated, of the airport's intent to seek a refinancing of its 2003 bonds. Upon the call date, there's a 10-year call date from the issuance in 2003, there's a 90-day period prior to the 10th anniversary of the bonds in which you can start providing your infrastructure, your legislative approval, all your public consensus gathering in order to then be able to take advantage, should there be an interest rate environment conducive to following through on refunding your bonds for savings. Airport Chairman Serniklas was brought in to a meeting in February at the airport authority when Standard and Poor's came in. The chairman of the airport was extremely supportive of what was provided as far as information to Standard and Poor's and has continually supported the refunding opportunities for savings of the 2003 bonds. We've had many chances, because I understand also that Senator Serniklas takes his job very seriously. He attends airport board meetings, and if he can't personally attend, he has his staff.
Okay, I'm going to ask, focus on the question of why it's so urgent and not why the senator, and basically not focusing on the senator's apparent non-action or whatever you want to call it, so.
Okay, well, for the record, I wasn't going there, sir. What I was trying to do is to say that there has been a continual exchange of information which began as early as February this year. We posted a notice of a public hearing for, in conjunction with this, we're required to do so at GIDEA. Members of the legislature, legislature staff attended this meeting. The only person for the public that was there was Attorney Joyce Tang, but we're required to publish this notice in pursuit of the intent to refund the bonds and the intent of Bill 129 at the time. So there's been consistent progress. So there's been consistent progress made to be able to work towards getting to where we are today. And there is a ninety-day call notice that we are working with. And one of the requirements within a ninety-day call notice is a notice to existing bondholders, which is contained in the governor's transmittal message of thirty days prior to the refunding taking place. Why are we here today? We're here today because we're, we're looking for certainty now so that we can proceed and we can work to best structure, given the interest rate environments and given other hurdles that we're going to have to do with marketing and other issues. Airport credits are not easy credits. Airports are susceptible to, you know, ebbs and flows of tourist arrivals. We're all aware of that because of where we live. We see tourist arrivals come and go, airport revenues come and go. Airports don't operate on a consistent basis. We'd like the certainty today to be able to get the support from the Guam Legislature, which will allow for us to best structure the refunding opportunity which exists today. And I'll reference now this handout that you all received, which indicates in its most simplest form that currently the, the airport authority pays eighteen-plus million dollars in annual debt service. The refunding only will produce a reduced debt service in a neighborhood of, in excess of one point six million dollars a year. At the heart of the issue, this is, this is all contained, Mr. Chairman, in section two. These two columns here are the, are basically section two of the bill. You'll note that we don't extend the maturity. You note that if you turn the page, that the net present value savings is seven point five-four percent. The legislative norm for refunding is two percent. We would then take what it is that we have as far as an existing financial opportunity and look to you for the certainty to pursue that today as opposed to continuing in a state of uncertainty, which we would actually be in if we were to delay, delay this any, you know, longer than today. Today provides a certainty. Today is the culmination of all the communications that we've had with, I think, just about every single office in this legislature regarding this, this, the intent of, of the bill. And at its heart, at its core, is first and foremost, the savings that can be obtained. So we'd like the certainty today to be able to proceed as opposed to waiting until the public hearing is held, whether, wondering whether or not the legislature would then include this bill or Bill one twenty-nine, because I believe the public hearing was on one twenty-nine, um, after they did the committee report, or are they going to waive the requirement for a committee report if you guys went into session for the budget? We don't know. So the shoe goes on the other foot. We don't know. And we, we're seeking some certainty and above all, some support for what is at the core, a savings opportunity. So I, I would just like to reiterate that there has been an ongoing dialogue that is culminated in today's call for special session. The, um, the urgency with the avoidance of the MBIA payment is, is coupled with the potential for the savings. So you add the eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars that you, that will go away forever with the interest rate savings that you see, you know, outlined here. This is a cumulative effort, by the way. Again, it's one point six million, eight hundred thousand in savings from the interest rate environment and eight hundred and twenty thousand from the avoidance going forward of the MBIA payment. So that, in essence and in summary, Mr. Chairman, is a recap of section two.
All right. Thank you very much. Senator Lim Thia Kuo and then Speaker Wampat.
Mr. Carlson, can you please speak to the second page regarding the graph gross debt service savings in relation to the timeline of the last two months? You, you were speaking earlier about the, the time sensitivity of it. Can you speak towards the representation of the numbers on that graph?
Um, when we ran some numbers back in, um, May, April, I believe, there was a presentation that was made to the airport board that indicated that market conditions at the time would re-realize potential savings in the neighborhood in excess of seventeen million dollars. The gross debt service savings, as you can tell over time, has diminished due to changing market conditions and, and we're now just north of twelve million dollars simply because of what has transpired from April to where we are today in July. The, um, the handout that I provided is actually dated July twenty-third. So the volatility in the market is basically the intent of the graph that is there in the bottom right-hand of the, of the page. And again, the certainty that we'd like to be able to secure today would allow for us to, to take what are now relatively stable market conditions that, that would result in the gross cash flow savings of twelve million dollars and the PV savings of ten million dollars, as you can tell from the bottom left side, and then the net present value savings in excess of seven percent to be achieved. There, there are time sensitivities. There are some things that we'd like to be able to do with certainty. And again, one of the reasons, the primary reason that we're here today is to obtain the, the support and the certainty as evidenced by, you know, the passage of this act from this body.
So in the span, so your data here is representing that in the span of roughly two months, the, the, the net savings has decreased by close to four million dollars?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you. Speaker Wampat?
I understand. I know you're, you're talking about certainty and using today's date, but even in the letter from the governor and even in the statement that's being said here, that if the government issues a call notice to the bondholders by August the thirtieth, twenty thirteen, will we be able to avoid the bond insurance payment of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars? Yes or no?
If we issue a call notice and we don't do the bonds, then we have to pay it because we haven't refunded the bonds.
But it says by August the thirtieth.
The, the, there's, it's the chicken and egg or the A and the B. The approval needs to be secured so that we can issue the call notice, refund the bonds, and terminate the payment. So we don't have an ongoing obligation because we would have refunded the two thousand and three bonds. Simply by issuing the call notice does not terminate the MBIA payment. We must refund the bonds.
And how long is the process to be able to have it secured or approved?
Once we receive legislative approval?
Yes.
Then we would start looking at calendaring, uh, in meetings with investors as we've done previously with the business privileged tax bonds. We found that to be a very useful exercise in being able to schedule meetings with selected holders of existing Guam bonds for their triple tax exempt status and then work towards putting together what we call a book of business, given the market conditions and targeting a certain timeframe in which we would then hopefully be able to take the interest in the potential sale. We would have to finish documents. We don't have our preliminary official statement as, as many blanks in it. We, we don't have anything with certainty that we can put as far as parameters, like the new money issue can't exceed six and a half percent. We don't have a, a lot of information that we're going to be required to have so that we could present to a fidelity or to a Franklin Fund with respect to, this is what we have as far as a prospectus with all the i's dotted and t's crossed for your review and hopefully participation in a upcoming bond sale.
Well, apparently that this is not the first time this has been done, so there is a template. You have not put in the details and you've been having this discussion since early February, so I'm almost sure that a lot of these things have been done with the details. Now, it does not come back to the legislature for our review in past, in, in this past year or two, is that everything has been going beyond the legislature after its authorization or approval without bringing it back to the legislature. That's the one thing that has changed.
Well, ma'am, we do not exceed any authorizations that this body issues. So if you say you can't go longer than thirty years and you cannot go out and sell bonds in excess of seven percent and you have to seek local participation from interested residents of Guam on a prior sale basis before you go to the larger market, we do everything that you prescribe and authorize us to do. So we don't do anything that you have not authorized.
Absolutely. And that's exactly what is here. So once it is authorized, you know, if the bill is passed, then exactly you'll be able to move forward. So I know you're not going at this, you know, blindly, and I know you're not doing this last minute because you've had this discussion earlier. But my point is here is the drop date of August the thirtieth. And next week on the sixth is a public hearing that will call for all stakeholders in the community to come forward. And even with the public hearing that you held, you indicated that only one person, an attorney, who had showed up. Now, I don't know if that attorney is the attorney on behalf of or have any interest in, in, or there for the board or for GIDEA, but it's not the community. As stated earlier, we've not heard, you know, from those who are a part of the airport, you know, the vendors who are there, the airlines who are there. Do you have any letters of support from any of those vendors?
Ma'am, may I, Mr. Santos or Mr. Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Speaker, we actually have letters from every single signatory airlines in support of this effort. And again, we, we did look forward to possibly having a public hearing on this, but unfortunately again with the timelines, as we made our legislative rounds to seek support to actually have it move out of committee, we were actually even told by, by numerous members of the Thirty-Second Guam Legislature to possibly seek the governor's assistance in having this heard in a special session because of the timelines that are required. Um, I do want to point out that, you know, although we did engage this earlier in the year, there was changes to the initial bond installation. Initially, we were just looking at doing the refinance, but you know, with the specialty retail concession, the increase of revenues allowed us to go out to the market for newer monies to address the Priority One and Priority Two projects that's listed in the bond installation that's before you folks.
So the, so the question then, the original question that the chairman had asked, we're getting to, you know, the, the main issue is the date. Will then by the sixth, having a public hearing, be sufficient to be able to meet that date of August the thirtieth?
Well, the, the date actually, Madam Speaker, actually conflicts with our ongoing effort. We're scheduled to be in presentation with Moody's Rating Agency on the sixth and then Standard and Poor's the subsequent date. And then the following week, we're scheduled to be on a, a pricing trip for the bonds.
But, you know, we, we live in the, the age of technology, so, and if you're there, I'm sure you have representatives, your consultants and your comptroller and, and others would, would be, be able then to read your statement on the sixth.
Understood, but I, I think it goes back to what Mr. Carlson said earlier about uncertainties today, you know, I mean, we have the opportunity today to make it certain instead of an uncertainty when we're doing the presentations. You know, again, we're, we're hoping that, you know, with this, it'll ensure that, you know, we get favorable ratings as we move the process forward.
Thank you. Senator Duñez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Lester, I think it's important to restate your efforts. The efforts that were taking place on the February timeline when the airport presented this opportunity to you, wasn't it such that they presented priorities one, two, and three as options going forward?
Uh, priorities one, two, and three, sir?
In terms of the attachment to the current bill, there, there cap programs? Cap improvements?
I believe there, there was capital improvement projects, but Mr. Santos, it was in a reduced amount, correct?
Speaking to the mic, please.
Uh, the initial project list was only based on this, on the projects that could be funded from the debt service savings.
That's, so, so then, then Lester, that would mean then that the only thing that you were representing during that timeline was what you knew to be certain in terms of their, their, their debt refinance calculation, as you said, as they would be called, based on your understanding that the insurance requirement would, would, would be no longer required. So you're working off of that eight hundred thousand in the February timeline.
I think we had forty or so million dollars worth of projects that we thought we could fund without substantially increasing what the airport is currently paying, yes.
Right.
Um, and I believe as Mr. Ada just stated with the concession agreement coming in, there was an opportunity to take longstanding capital improvement projects with full concurrence from the signatory airlines and finally get them off to the chalkboard and actually, you know, implement it and complete it.
Sure. So Frank, I just want to make sure that it's clearly understood what was known and what should have been known was based on your, your building up and that's why you guys put together your CIPs and your Priority One, Two, and Three categories, correct?
Um, only Priority One and Priority Two, but again, between February and early May, we had a capital project list that was only to be funded by the debt service savings, so there's no increase in airline rates.
Right.
Uh, so then in May, when we met with the airlines, Priority One and Priority Two projects was presented and discussed with them for their approval based on our airline agreement. And those projects are what's being listed in the current bill.
Sure. And then subsequent to that, you now have an additional source of revenue, correct?
Correct.
So it all culminates in the proper timeline of the May twenty-ninth introduction of the legislation and all the due diligence that happened prior to that because it wouldn't have been known in February or in March that you had the potential to finance the priority, even the entirety of Priority One or even going into Priority Two, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So just want to make sure that it's clearly understood that this lag time is not something about, oh, we knew all of this had to happen. I know that the airport has made several presentations over the last year and a half in terms of its needs and requirements on cap projects, but they were also always working within their, their, their finance capability. So this culmination is, at least in my due diligence working with the airport, a buildup to where we got to on the introduction of the bill, May twenty-ninth, cumulative to what we can do with regard to the current priority areas. Is that correct, Mr. Santos?
That is correct.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Vice Speaker Cruz?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not sure if I heard correctly. Did I hear Mr. Ada say that you have meetings with Franklin on the sixth and Moody's on the seventh of this month, of this next month?
Uh, no, it's Moody's on the sixth, sir.
Uh, you've already scheduled meetings before we, this bill was even discussed with us. I, I, I see on the other side there, there, I, this has never been announced to us today that there, there was already meeting scheduled within the next week.
No.
And so there's meetings that are scheduled. Can we then, I, I know, Lester. I wasn't the one that brought it out.
I understand.
Yes. And so if you're going to be meeting on the sixth, then your preliminary statement that you said needs to have the blanks filled in and the t's crossed and the i's dotted, can we have a copy of that draft? Can you provide that to us when we break, after we come back from lunch? I mean, you're going to be meeting somebody within a week. Surely you're not going over there empty-handed.
Okay. Sir, Moody's is coming out primarily to be able to look at Guam Water Works Authority. In conjunction... in conjunction with their on-island visit. What we have done is we have scheduled meetings for a fiscal update by the governor's fiscal policy team and the governor himself. We've left a spot open for them, because Moody's rates the utilities, power, water, and the airport. They don't rate our other bond issues. So since they've taken up our invitation to come to Guam, we have looked at the opportunity to provide as much exposure to the issuers of Guam bonds, including the airport, to be able to meet with them and discuss where we are. This is by no means a planned presentation for a rating on a bond issue. It just so happened to coincide with a meeting that was confirmed two and a half weeks ago, in which we're trying to maximize their time on the ground to understand better Guam and its credits while they're out here.
So is there any reason why we can't get the document that the speaker was referring to, that you said needed to fill in the blanks and dot the i's and cross the t's? Well, after we get back from lunch, can we get a copy of that, so we can look and see what you guys are, what's being planned and what's being said?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Senator Sannikolas, and then we'll probably, following that, we'll probably break for lunch. I'm sorry? Yes, the AG is here, in case anybody has a question off them, they're in the waiting room there. Senator Sannikolas, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Lester, for your presentation, and thank you for alluding earlier. I am, as you were suggesting, in absolute full support of the refunding. I think it makes perfect financial sense. In the current interest rate environment, we're going to be able to save a lot of money, and it's just a smart thing to do. I did have some questions. The first question that I had was, when is the actual window for the refunding? When was that window actually open? For the bond, the 2003?
The opportunity exists, again, there's a 90-day provision that allows for you to start the process, but we're working within that 90-day window right now. And one of the constraints, of course, is the often-mentioned 30-day notice that we need to provide. So we are working with your support, of course, to be able to try to realize, you know, the advantages that exist today.
When did the 90-day window open, though? When does the clock start, so that we can know exactly when the time runs out?
Beginning of July.
Beginning of July.
Because the next bond payment for the airport authority is September 30th.
I just wanted to reference that, because on the sheet here, where it was spoken about earlier on the gross debt service savings, it was talked about how we could have saved $4 million back in May, but the window to refund the bonds did not open until July.
There's a methodology that has some cost implications associated with it, called an advance refunding. It costs money to be able to call bonds earlier than the 90 days, or at the 10-year call date. I think the primary function of the airport briefing that occurred in April was to show them, kind of like a snapshot in time, that, given current market conditions, this is where you could be if you were able to do this. I don't think that we're trying to convey that we've had missed opportunities. Senator Lempdialco, if I misspoke earlier, I apologize, but again, it was more of a market trend that we're trying to show, as opposed to opportunities lost, because certainly there were not any opportunities lost from the April timeframe, because we had no authorization. We weren't, we didn't come before the legislature for advanced refunding opportunities, and it was outside the 90-day window.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
Yes, sir.
You know, we want to make sure that we're taking advantage of the opportunities as they present themselves. You know, there's a real concern about just getting this through a public hearing process. And I know that we want to hit that August 30th deadline, but I understand that the notice, that the notice to current, the notice to current bondholders has to be sent out by August 30th. So just that we can put it all into perspective before we break for lunch, assuming we have a public hearing on the 6th, and assuming we go into session and we pass the refunding portion of the bill, if we do all of that before August 30th, it shouldn't take too much time to actually issue out that call notice on August 30th, because it's just a, it's pretty much a formality at that point, that the, whoever your advisor, investment advisor, would need to execute. Is that correct?
I think you said "if" three times.
Yeah, I did.
Yes, sir.
But right now, I believe that this body shares my beliefs, that the refunding is a no-brainer. I mean, it's going to save our government money, it's not going to extend the duration of the bond, it's going to give us a lower interest rate environment. And so I believe that my colleagues and I agree that the refunding would be a very, very good thing. The real question, and the real concern, as public servants, is involving the public in the process. And so if we can involve the public on the 6th and get this thing passed before the 30th, we should be able to issue that call notice by the 30th.
Again, sir, the certainty that we're here to secure from you today would give us all of what we needed, and the ifs, and the what-ifs, and, you know, all of the things that could, you know, come along as bumps in the road would be eliminated. There was a statement that was made earlier about efficiencies of legislation. That's how I'll characterize it. We're here. We're not going to say the same thing any differently next week. We're here right now. We're not going to look at providing new materials to you. Why don't we just secure the certainty, avoid the ifs? Since there's consensus on the refunding, why don't we just go ahead and provide the certainty, and let's forego the ifs?
The important thing, the biggest concern again, is the public input. You know, that's where all the ifs are, have far more value than the certainty, you know, involving the public in the process. I can say, I can change the entire context of the sentence and put "when" as opposed to "if," but the question still is, when all those things happen, will we still be able to issue the call notice by August 30th, going through that regular process?
I think I'll stick to my previous answer.
Okay. And then my other question that I wanted to ask before we broke for lunch was how we put the $125 million new financing in with the refunding. Now, the refunding is where the urgency lies with regards to the $820,000 on the insurance. And I understand that pairing the 125 to the 125 million in new money borrowing does result in savings when you pair it with the 135 refunding borrowing, because we're going to the market in one shot, rather than having to repeat the process twice.
That's correct.
I did, I wanted to ask, how much are we talking about in terms of savings? If we did the 135 without the 125, how much would that cost? If we did the 135 now, and then the 125 later, what kind of costs are we looking at there? And how much is the cost going to be if we just did the whole 250 million approximately at once?
Okay, without being considered anything, but just straightforward, when would you say that the second phase would occur?
What I'm asking is the costs, the cost of going to market.
I understand. So if we did Series A, which would be just the refunding, and we did it within the confines of what we know we have to do with the 10-year call provision contained in the indenture, then we know we need to issue the call notice, and we need to redeem before the payments for September 30th. So that's one, that's A. When would we do B? Because if you're saying authorization for B may come the last quarter of the year, I can't tell you what the interest rate environment would be, because it would be two separate things.
I'm just talking about the administrative costs for bringing the issue to market. I mean, we don't know what the interest rate environment will be 30 days from now. You know, the truth of the matter is, interest rates fluctuate almost on a daily basis, so...
That's correct.
What are the administrative costs of doing two issues versus doing one issue?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of at least a million dollars.
$1 million in additional cost to have two issues instead of one, two issues instead of one issue?
Roughly, yeah, just off the top of my, I don't have Senator Cruz's advocates with me today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. If there's no other questions at this point, we're going to, Senator Uggan?
Just one quick and very direct question, Mr. Chairman, and I guess the airport or even GITA representative can be able to respond to this. It goes back again to, obviously, if the decision of the majority of senators here is to proceed with the discussion today, then we'll move in that direction. But should we go the route of the public hearing on the 6th? The question that I would like to pose directly is, when the legislature passes the proposal for refinancing with a strong probability of additional resources to the airport, what, how will GITA and the airport respond to that in terms of meeting the requirement for the August 30th notification? So that you can go out to the market, get your market ratings, and then at the same token, meet that August 30th requirement?
Could you please outline for me some timeframes?
The legislation is passed by August 12th. You have that complete authorization. Go out and refinance, go out and borrow additional resources. How would you work it so that you meet the August 30th timeline?
So we're going to, having a couple of assumptions. One, there is a public hearing, that's an assumption. One, there is a public hearing scheduled for August 6th. Two, has the speaker called for session for August 12th?
There's a session that's anticipated to be scheduled. No, 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 I understand your question.
Yes.
But I'm saying that, based on discussions with the speaker and some of the senators, I'm saying, should the legislation be passed? When the legislation is passed, the 12th or the 13th of August? How will the government, in this case, GITA, proceed with that constricted timeframe?
The session is being called primarily to address the FY14 budget, correct?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we're not necessarily in a question-question format. The question is, when the legislature acts on this proposal, not the budget, fiscal year 14 budget, because obviously, we understand that that's a commitment that we have, and we anticipate a budget timeline. The question is, with, as it relates to either Bill 129, S32, or a proposal that is before us, when the legislature, my question is, acts on this proposal by the close of business on the 12th or the 13th, how will the government react so that, in fact, you're able to meet that August 30th timeline notification to the existing bondholders, acquire necessary rating, and then also proceed with the acquisition of proceeds?
If I may, I'm kind of confused by the question because of the dates. One of the reasons why we're here today was, again, because our efforts in trying to get the original bill that was submitted by, or introduced by Senator Timony Barnes and Senator Chris Duennas was in committee, and we were waiting to get public hearing. We went around to talk to all, you know, again, as much of the legislative members as we could. Again, in those discussions with more than half of the people in this body was suggesting that, you know, we asked for the governor to intervene. We did that, we're here today, we're hopefully, and that's why I don't understand the 12th and the 13th, because...
No, 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 I'm just throwing out timelines, only because it comes back to public participation.
No, I understand that.
I mean, this legislature, not too long ago, Mr. Chairman...
If I may clarify, I think the question that you're asking is that, if in fact, already it's been announced, there'll be a public hearing on August 6th, and there's probably good reason to believe that session will be called on the 12th, and the possibility that the Bill 129 could be acted upon on August 12th or 13th. The question then is, does that, between, let's say, the 13th of August and August 29th, would that be sufficient time for GITA and the airport to put together the necessary documents to issue the call to the bondholders?
I would not feel comfortable.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Speaker?
Thank you. Before we break, because we're going to come back, can you please provide a draft indenture so the senators can see what you have in draft form for this afternoon?
We could provide draft documentation, yes.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and recess, and we'll be back at 2:00 PM this afternoon.